Alderman Rosick. Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Welcome, everybody and everyone that's here. We're going to start off with committee business, Festival of the Arts update. Chief Fister.
Good evening. I'm here to report back on the Festival of the Arts that was brought up earlier this year. The discussion was about vendors across the street and the temporary use permits along with some safety issues at the Festival of the Art. We did have an opportunity to work with the Festival of the Art and the residents that live around Fowler Park. We set up a meeting with them to talk about the issues and what their concerns were safety-wise. And with that as well, we put out a survey to them, asking, you know, various questions of would you like to see the street closed? Do you still want to continue to be a have vendors on your property? Have you had any problems, you know, with vendors? Those type of questions as well. And that was to just open the door of communications for the Festival of the Arts and them to start having some conversations in there. On the that meeting was at Fowler Park on June 22nd. At that time, we had approximately nine residents and two representatives from the festival committee that showed up. Every resident was invited to that meeting. Some of the things were driving too fast on the street during the festival time, the crosswalks and where people are crossing and so forth. So I'm glad to say that we were able to make it a lot safer this year. I don't know if anybody got up there to see it. We did add additional stop signs to the area, which slowed the traffic down even more and kind of gave a designated spot for people to cross the streets instead of just crossing anywhere that is out there. We also had community service officers there on Friday when the vendors started to show up, where we got them in line on one side. And we had worked with the residents to establish a different time for their vendors to come in so that the whole street wasn't blocked on both sides. I think that worked out very well this year. And it was a pleasure to, you know, the community service officers said it worked out great that were there. Captain Brad Tim was also on site and said it was definitely a lot smoother transition. We did learn that we do need CSOs at the end of the festival because that was kind of a mad dash in there where everybody's trying to get into the park again to pick up their tents and all their artwork and everything else like that. So we did talk to the Festival of the Arts about that, and we will be adding CSOs to assist on that Sunday after closing to deal with all the vendors that are in there. So that's basically the police department dealt with all the safety issues, and we were just trying to open the door for communication on the temporary use permits. The survey that did come back, all the residents, eighty percent of the residents that we sent it out to wished to keep the temporary use permits in their replies to us. So I can answer any questions on safety.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Can I ask you questions that aren't just safety? Okay. How many surveys were sent out and how many were returned?
That was... I think, Jason, was that twenty... How many houses were it was that? Twenty-eight, twenty-eight houses, and we got back eighteen out of the twenty.
And and what were some of the comments that stood out for you on the survey?
The comments were, I mean, most of the residents felt it was within their rights to have artists on their property. There were a couple, and I think a couple came and spoke here the last time, that do try to get up-and-coming artists that are there. Some of the other vendors that show up, they were like, well, we've just been inviting them back because, you know, we bought the property and they've been coming back and so forth. And they said it's just it makes a great for a great atmosphere is kind of what their comments were on it. Very little problems there. Let's see. They weren't interested in, at this time, working with the Festival of the Arts to establish a list of any kind of vendors that they could go to. They wanted to do that on their own. And the last one, yeah, was the street being shut off, and seventy-five percent did not want the street closed.
Okay. And the last question in this one does regard safety and actually expenses. There's no question that if those vendors are across the street, that causes more traffic to the area and more expense on our part as a city to make sure that officers are out there, you know, vetting some of that. So even that extra expense is a concern to me. We're paying extra money out of the city budget for that portion of the event so that the individuals in the yards can can profit for the weekend. I guess that concerns me a little bit, too. I don't know if we're taking that into consideration.
I can tell you that the total cost for the police department was $460 for the whole Festival of the Art. And that means that we have an officer in the park while it's open, nonstop, a community service officer in there. So that's where the majority of the hours are. You know, the traffic control, this and that, was about two and a half hours, you know, to three hours. So that'd be six hours, you know, front and back at that point. So that's kind of the cost.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Kavieski.
Follow-up to it. So there's no additional CSOs that are required because of the permitting of activity along the street with residents? I mean, they're already there, they're...
We don't have anybody out there as a crossing guard or a crosswalk during the event, you know? We try to make that with the stop signs so people will cross in designated areas. So we're not putting extra police out there for that.
Alderman Rosack.
Thanks, chief. Apparently, we need to add to your title, Community Arts Director, in addition to Chief of Police, but we appreciate you jumping on this one. Do the CSOs inside of the Arts Festival get paid for by the festival? Do they pay for CSO tax?
They get billed for it, correct.
Okay. So there's really no extra cost to us, right?
No.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks. Appreciate your work on it.
Other questions or comments for Chief Fister? Okay, let's hear from the folks from Festival of the Arts. Mr. Heinley, if you could introduce yourself and to the council again and for the for public record.
I decided it was important to give you my comments so you'd have them to look back at later. But first, I would like to say, my name is Phil Heinley. I'm the current president of the Oconomowoc Festival of the Arts. And I would like to thank the mayor, as well as your council members, for all your time tonight, as well as the requests you have made for information in order to make an informed decision regarding the temporary use permits for the across-the-street vendors during the festival. I'd like to do an additional thank you to those of you in the council and mayor who actually helped volunteer at the festival this year. I would like to thank the police chief and his department for a very professional and complete job of reaching out to these TUP owners to hear their concerns. Jason Gallo has also been very helpful in gathering and sharing relevant information. In my recent conversations with you council members, I was asked to review what has actually happened since our meeting back in March. At that time, there were five individuals from the festival presenting reasons why we believed the festival and city would be better showcased if the city did not issue the TUPs. Three individuals from two properties that had vendors in their yard explained why they wanted to keep doing it. At the end of the meeting, I was asked to go back and talk with the owners to try and reach an agreeable solution. The chief of police has facilitated these meetings. And again, in the first meeting, there was nine. At this council meeting back in March, there was three. So there hasn't been a great communications. I've tried to meet with some of those people, and they were not interested in meeting with me personally. So I just have the chief's report. One of the council people thought we, the festival, were mean to the homeowners when we spoke to you back in March. And these were not actually quotes from the festival, so I wanted to go through some of these again. These were quotes from the artists. Please get rid of the squatters. They are not good for the show or artists. Get rid of sales permits outside the show. Can something be done to eliminate large number of squatters? Very disappointing to see and not common to other shows I do. Continue efforts to stop yard sale vendors. The show across the street is ridiculous. It's killing your show. It is important to be concerned about the unofficial show that is becoming established across the street. Such a situation has been the downfall of other shows. It is disappointing to see the growth of displays in the yards surrounding the park. Sales of Tupperware do not enhance the public's view of your wonderful fair. And then some of the quotes from our festival members. I have attended many art fairs in Milwaukee, Madison, Delafield, the Third Ward, Baraboo, Lake Mills, and Holy Hill. At all of these festivals, I have only seen artists who were invited and paid to attend. I have never seen any outside art sales near any of these art shows. Across the street, vendors are piggybacking off the festival. They are making money off the festival. Our festival food, our festival, the food vendors and spotlight groups are all nonprofit for the community organizations. The funds generated are returned to the community through scholarships, band boosters, church organizations, and support other community activities. Temporary use vendors certainly support the property owner, but the owners are not improving the image of Oconomowoc to our artists or guests. I was asked by a council person, what's one good reason why we should discontinue the temporary use permits during the Oconomowoc Festival of the Arts? Number one, there is more risk of injury to pedestrians and vehicles on Awkward Avenue because of increased activity on both sides of the street. There are additional costs for police presence during setup, takedown, and enforcing the permits. There are additional expenses to the city planner to issue the permits each year. There is little additional income to the city. It contributes to fewer parking spaces for visitors attending the festival. There's a potential of a lawsuit to a homeowner in case of an accident on their property. It does not enhance the image of Oconomowoc as a special city to live in or visit. It is not a situation in which other events in Oconomowoc are faced. You do not have to agree with all these, but if you can agree with one of these, the Oconomowoc Festival of the Arts is requesting temporary use permits not be issued to owners in the neighborhood of Fowler Park during the art festival weekend for the safety of our guests, respect for our artists, and in order to continue bringing fine art to Oconomowoc. Thank you, and do you have any questions for me? Any questions from council?
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. You said that a lot of the artists are saying that when they go to other art festivals, juried art festivals around the country or wherever they go, that this is not common to see these vendors, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I had a chance, and it was kind of a fluke in a way. I was in Green Lake the week before our Arts Festival, and Green Lake was having their juried art festival. It's not quite as large as ours, but very nice. It's down on the water, if you've been in Green at Green Lake. Very similar concept to ours, and they do not have any extra vendors that are setting up and selling Tupperware or crafts or other paintings or whatever. So I thought that was really interesting. The vibe of it was really neat, like ours, with the music, string quartets, you know, food that where the money was going to charities, et cetera, but no additional vendors. And I I thought that was really nice. I think that might be all I have, Philip. Would it be helpful for us, for you, to find out which communities? You said that doing something like this could be the downfall of this event. Would it be helpful for us to understand where that has happened in other communities?
Well, I can tell you, the Oconomowoc Festival of Arts is going to stay in Oconomowoc. We had a wonderful festival this year, by the way. Several people asked how it was. It was great. It was really great. We're going to keep doing it. And again, the comment was some of the artists have said this, I'm not sure if I want to keep doing it. So I don't have any specifics. Just a general thing that they've seen around the country.
Have you had any vendors to this point, or artists, I should say, to this point, that are really pushing back on this and saying maybe they won't attend or or come again because of that?
No, they still come because they they have wonderful sales. The people come to the festival and they buy. That's great.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Couple of things, but what you just said, it's great to hear that they're having wonderful sales.
Yes.
So it sounds like the outside vendors are not affecting their sales. Just out of curiosity, what, like your number of vendors, and I, you know, and I know we have, you know, the pandemic years in there that kind of skew things, but, you know, are your numbers, are your are your numbers dropping off year after year? Are they getting better?
Good question. We used to do one hundred and thirty-five artists, and then COVID hit, we did nothing in 2020. Then the next year, we decided we wanted a smaller festival. We put space between every booth, so we only had ninety in 2021. This year, 2022, we had a hundred.
Okay. So your numbers have increased since last year.
Slowly, yeah.
And then, you know, your your eight things about, you know, why not to have it? And I'm not going to waste all of our time and, you know, kind of hit all of them, but just, you know, a couple of things that jumped out at me. Number two, I won't read it. We all have it in front of us. Chief Fister mentioned we only had two and a half hours of CSO time, which it sounds like we may have used that regardless to kind of help with your hundred vendors. You know, is the little additional income for the city? The city doesn't do this to make money. That's not our motivation. And then, you know, enhance that, you know, this does not enhance the image of Oconomowoc as a special city to live or visit. We are a special city to live in because we respect homeowners' rights. And then, the last one, I wrote it in such bad chicken scratch, I can't even read it.
All you have to do is find one.
No, I mean, I literally could dispute all of them, is what my point is. But my point also is, I'm not going to waste our time going through all eight of them.
May I ask the police chief one question?
Sure.
I know that the CSOs that we have, we pay for, but I thought you also were going to be keeping track of the other time that your department spent.
That's correct. The ones in the park that are there for the whole festival while it's open, you guys pay for. The ones that we had out there lining up the cars to get in, those were paid for out of our budget, out of the police department.
And that was the two and a half hours?
It was about two and a half, three hours was the time.
And do you think we could have used? So let's just say we did have no outside vendors. Would we still potentially use those two and a half hours just to help facilitate traffic into the park?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of vehicles, and it's hard. It's hard for the festival to to get them all on the side of the road. You know, somebody in a uniform has a little more control.
So there was not additional cost to the city?
So there there would be the the two or three hours, but I would say no, no additional cost.
Alderman Kavieski.
I'm kind of irritated with this, to be honest with you. As a resident, as as an alderman, I will echo, we are a special community. We are a community that welcomes all. Whether you can afford the $5,000 original piece, or if you're coming by to enjoy the the site of that piece and you would have a budget to participate in something in one of the off-site vendors, everybody's welcome here. I have volunteered my time over the past years. I've enjoyed that. I didn't this past year, partly because I was irritated. And I've heard from other residents that they're kind of irritated about it. And I know that's not the image that you want, and it's not the image that we want as a city. And and we had great conversation on the phone, and I appreciate that. And if this council were to decide to remove the permits and they decide to have rummage sales, they're they're absolutely within their right, and there is nothing that that this body nor you could do to prohibit that. And I would I would have a sweet rummage sale if that were to occur, if I was one of those homeowners. And I know that's not what you want, and that's not what I'm advocating. What I'm advocating for, as I mentioned to you on the phone, is that we maintain the program the way we have it right now. I think it's in everybody's best interest. I think it was in the interest of the Festival of the Arts, which I completely enjoy. And I think it adds to the community, and the location in which it is and the opportunity for those other residents to participate makes it unique. I would embrace it. And I think some of the homeowners that came and spoke last time gave that in their in their discussion, that... their, in their discussion, that there are artists that would have liked to participate, maybe there wasn't a spot, but they got, they got the opportunity to showcase their passion, their, their, their creativeness to, to people in, in a great format. I hope that the Festival of the Arts continues for another 100 years. I hope your vendors give you feedback that they keep coming back because their sales are strong. That's the community that we live in. Our community supports these kind of activities like no other, and they will continue to. I will not be supporting veering off the, the path that we're on, and I hope that the community knows that this was a kind inquiry and that the, the partnership for all of the community and the Festival of the Arts will continue on in a very positive way in the future.
Alderman Mulder?
Did the number of applications remain high post-COVID? So you, you let 100 in. How many, how many applications did you have?
We get about 300 applications. And then it goes through a, first a jury to select the 110, and then we actually have judges that come in and judge the 100 and give away a dozen winning categories.
Right. You know, I, just thinking about this, there's clearly a demand from some of the, or there's interest from some of the local residents that live around there to have an un-juried, up-and-coming art fair. I wouldn't think there could be an opportunity to outreach to that group and say, hey, let's go over to one of the nearby parks and set up a separate un-juried art fair where, you know, people can, a select number can, you know, share their things. I, I guess I'm, you know, I think about it, if I'm, if I'm going to the Beer Garden, and then I go over to, I walk by the Beer Garden to get to Coco's, did that diminish the steak I had at Coco's at all? I don't, I don't think that walking past something that some people might find distasteful most probably, fine, fine. I, I don't think it diminishes what's inside the walls of the park. I real, I really don't. I, I can see, there's, there is a clear line there down the street between, you know, juried and, and, you know, questionable, whether it's art, if it's Tupperware or whatever, but, you know, I just, I, I, I don't see the, the, the value in, you know, fighting this fight if that's what it is, or, or limiting, limiting rights of, of the homeowners.
Alderman Rozak?
Matt, those are great points. And beer tents never are gaudy to me. That's what you're implying.
I've seen you in them, and I understand that.
That's what you're implying. They're never gaudy. Philip, thanks for coming in. Obviously, you took, you took this issue on, so you, you know, you're kind of, everyone's asking you questions, so I appreciate you looking into it. We had a nice conversation on the phone a few weeks ago, and it sounds like you, one of the questions I had for you was try to get this outreach, and you've done that. You've, you've met with about nine people, so I, I think that's a positive. Interestingly, I, I don't agree with any of your points either, and I, I'm not gonna change my position on, on removing these, but I just happened to be in Santa Fe, New Mexico, last week, a very artsy town, and there are people that are paying probably $10,000 a month for space for the, you know, really, really fine art. And guess what's right outside the door in a lot of these places? People making flowers, street vendors, people doing fire with sticks and stuff. It really, it's kind of, to me, part of that charm of, of Santa Fe, and I think that's what the residents there think as well. You can go into a place and buy a 10,000 piece of artwork and then go watch the guy with the fire sticks, you know, in the plaza. So I appreciate you putting some effort into this and trying to do the outreach. Chief, thank you, but I'm not apt to change my position. I think we're, we're gonna leave the people have their rights to do what we've been doing for 20, 15, 20 years. But thank you for coming in, Philip.
Any further questions or comments from council? Alderman Spiegelberg?
The last time we talked about this, there was this concept that if we took away the TUPs, people could have rummage sales in their yard. If you don't mind me addressing what you said, that you would have some big sweet rummage sale, I don't think that speaks very highly of the, the caliber of the people that we have in this area and in this district, which is partially mine, because even if we took away the temporary use permits, I just don't see people snubbing their nose at the festival and having janky, sweet rummage sales in their front yard. I just don't, I just don't like that attitude or going down that path. I just needed to say that, so.
Other questions or comments? Well, we really appreciate, do you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to just close with one thing. First of all, this has never been a fight. We like the people across the street. Most of them support the festival. We get free electricity from them. They come and help. It's great. And in terms of rummage sales, they've always been able to do rummage sales for 50 years. I'm not concerned about the people that want to have vendors in the yard. What I'm concerned about the city giving them a permit, you can have four people in your yard. So that's why I've presented this. It's for you to make the decision. And quite honestly, I am going to be okay with any decision, but your decision that you make, I want it to be not just for those 10 people that have vendors in the yard. I'd like it to be for the whole city. What do we want for the city? Do we want to have it like Texas?
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe or not? So again, I accept it. Thank you for your time and all your inputs.
So Mr. Henley, Chief Fister, thank you both. I think this is a good example of trying to dig into the details and come back to the council for an update. This was just an update. There's no action item here. It's an open discussion. If two council members feel that there is some action item that on this topic that you would like to bring back to the common council at some point in time in the future, please reach out to myself or our city administrator, Mark Frye. Thank you both very much. We're gonna move on to our next item, presentation discussion by Newman Developments Incorporated for Olympia Hills Development Project.
I brought this up. Introduce Matt Newman. He'll introduce his team. They wanted an opportunity to share what their discussions have been about the property on the southwest Summit Avenue area with you and the council and the community. Oh, yeah. You want me to?
I thought you were gonna do a whole presentation there. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Getting the, getting the map up.
Matt Newman from Newman Developments, thank you for your time here tonight. I've got Brian Lindgren and Steve DeKleen. We cannot tell you how excited we are about this project and this opportunity. I think many of you know I've been in front of the city for a number of different projects here over the years. The very first year I joined my dad in business was 2004, so 18 years ago, and that was the first time we wrote a proposal on this project. I think we've written probably eight over the years since then, kind of waiting for this opportunity, waiting for this time. And fortunately, with all that waiting has come the assemblage of 13 different properties that you see here and 236 acres of land. We think it's a very critical piece of the city, frankly. I think one person described it as maybe the, the tenderloin or the, or kind of the backbone of the city, given where it's located between kind of connecting downtown and connecting the Pabst Farms District along the interstate. It's obviously a very large parcel. There are not many large parcels like this anywhere in metro Milwaukee that are right in the middle of a city. Its location right by the high school obviously is really important as well, and then being right along State Highway 67 gives us a lot of access opportunities into the site, and then obviously connection out to Oconomowoc Parkway, which Brian will talk about. So we're very excited about this. I think the historical context of this parcel is significant for the city of Oconomowoc. I think Olympia was actually started before I was born, but for my whole life and my time in this area, I've lived in this area now for over 20 years. Olympia is known as a significant feature of Oconomowoc. It hosted thousands of weddings over the years. It had all sorts of outdoor recreational opportunities, and that's what we look forward to bringing back. This parcel has now sat vacant and kind of desolate for a number of years, and it kind of went through a series of ownership changes and just sort of slowly declined to what it is today, which is purely vacant. I like to call the building that's left there a bunker because that's really what it is, a giant concrete structure. There's nothing in it. It's been used for all sorts of uses over the years. We are very excited to find ways to activate and energize that area for a lot of different family-friendly uses. We're looking for seasonal uses, so Brian can chat a little bit about that. But what's most important in order to get back to kind of the liveliness that was in that site for decades prior, is we really have to get this started the right way. As many of you know, we're a single-family residential developer, so this parcel for us is right up our alley. It's exactly what we do. We've done it every part of the city, from the west side to the southeast side. I know it's technically in Summit, but we've done a lot of work there in the Pabst Farms area, the north side of town. We've sort of worked all over the city. This is something I just can't express how excited we are because we think it's so important for the city. But what's important is that we get this started the right way with, with land use so we understand what we can do in different parts of the site. 236 acres is a lot of land. We've got 43, 44 acres in the middle that you see in green, and that will be a mixed-use redevelopment of that hill. And then around it, Brian will touch on this, with the different housing types that we plan to start right away. The important thing is we're under a tight timeline. This is, it's been like one of those things where you hurry up, or I mean, you wait, 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 and then all of a sudden you gotta go really fast, and that's kind of what's going on with the estate in this process. And we do have an accepted offer to purchase. We actually have the opportunity to move forward with this, but the timelines are fairly tight. We want to break ground on this site in the spring, which means there's a lot of things to do between now and then. There's, this site is entitled right now for 640 units. I think many of you are aware of that. It's all zoned as, it's, it used to be a golf course and a ski hill course, but was zoned for multifamily, higher density, like eight unit per acre multifamily. And so there's a lot of things that will have to happen in terms of land use modifications, comp plan updates, traffic patterns, infrastructure, and public support to try to get the infrastructure completed the way we need to, to set up that hill for really what it can be. So I just can't express how excited we are to be here tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, let him talk more specifics about the project. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the time to come in and talk about this. Like Matt said, we share the city's vision that this, this can be something great, but we're gonna have to work together on it and make it ready to, to become what it can be. It was a focal point, and it was almost synonymous with Oconomowoc for a long time, and we think that can happen again. So part of our vision for this is the infrastructure that exists there is in bad shape. It mirrored what was torn down and what is currently being improved just to the east of here as we get closer to Highway 67. So I think that that is, is really a logical continuation into the site to continue to make this feel like it's all one. Bring it back together, link it up to the other communities that are immediately adjacent to it, link it up to the, all of the existing commercial, and reinvigorate this whole part of the city. So with that said, there are a couple of things under construction now. Pabst Road is one of them, and the entire Frontage area, which includes Regent Road. That area is, is being improved as we speak into public infrastructure. Pabst Road creates the most logical access to this site. This is where the, the visitors, the commercial people, people taking advantage of shops and restaurants that are gonna come here are gonna enter into the site. You can't miss the hill in the middle, so we might as well try to get people there as quickly and efficiently as possible. That's part of breathing new life into that hill, is to be able to get users that aren't immediately adjacent to it in there efficiently so they can, so they can enjoy it, and so that an operator and, and the activities that can happen there can have the people it takes to make them successful. So what you'll see coming in from Pabst Road is really a main entrance that we have linking down to the south to Oconomowoc Parkway. That would be more of a residential access point, not, not necessarily a primary one, but it's a necessary connector linking Oconomowoc Parkway into the commercial aspect. Going around the west side of the hill is really the most efficient way to connect this to the north. So to the north currently is a couple of dead-end streets. Regent Road, like we mentioned, is currently being worked on, but that provides another linkage back to the east and to the north. So there's some areas that are open for improvement to the north that we would take advantage of as well. So, so what you see highlighted on here is, is based on feedback from a bunch of different people on our vision and, and getting this out, just initial conversations with some, some potential partners, is a way to facilitate people movement and traffic movement in a very efficient manner and in a way that sets this site up for success. These arterial roads here also form kind of boundaries, if you will, from the uses. Like Matt mentioned, this site has a history. It had a, a master plan at one time of a bunch of multifamilies surrounded by a golf course. Well, unfortunately, that didn't come to fruition, and what we're laying out here is what we feel is a much more logical way to look at transitioning uses from what exists to the east, commercial and higher-density uses in through a, a new core around the hill, and transitioning into lower-density uses, single-family homes that more closely mirror the, the surrounding neighborhoods that exist to the west. So on the north side in red, you'll see a couple existing commercial pads. Those already exist. One of them has immediate access or views, I shouldn't say access, there's not access, but views to Highway 67, so it creates a nice commercial pad. We're talking to a, a local real estate agency who is interested in that currently. The area identified as number eight on the site, we view as a transitionary zone, if you will, something that transitions from the apartments and townhome-style buildings that exist already immediately to the north. So that would be in our vision, a continuation of four-ownership type townhomes. So these are attached two-to-four-unit buildings. We're building in areas like Sussex and Cedarburg with great success right now that are, are a little more vertical in nature, perform, you know, have a nice streetscape and, and give a, an ownership opportunity with a little less maintenance for folks. I'm gonna intentionally skip around the hill right now and talk about some of the other zones, and we'll, we'll end up, because I think that's gonna be a, a large topic of conversations. Area six is the largest area. That's to the west. That's everything to the, to the west of the hill. That's a logical, single-family neighborhood. That's an area where it's 120 acres. It's well-suited for, in the neighborhood of 240, 250, single-family homes of a variety of sizes. So Lake Country Village is a perfect example of what we envision there. That's an area where we have smaller lots, we call our villas, medium-sized, we call our residences, and larger, we call estates. There's room for all of that here, and it transitions nicely and, and makes for a nice neighbor for what exists currently. To the south in section five is another logical transition from lower density back into some higher density that exists to the south. Those are condo units immediately along Oconomowoc Parkway. And then transitioning further to the, to the east is where we see more multifamily. So Areas 1A and 1B are continuation of Lachlan. That Lachlan master plan had room for two additional buildings. We see no reason that if they choose to continue, they could, there's land available for them to do that. But it also lays the framework for that transition we've been talking about, from commercial uses to the east, to higher-density residential, and then back into lower density. So that's what you'll see in section two. It's approximately 30 acres. We have an agreement with Mandell Group, who's very interested. They do a lot of great work all throughout southeast Wisconsin and other parts of the country, that they think this is a great opportunity for them to increase their presence in Oconomowoc, increase their, their level of service to their customers and their product base. So that's a, that's our opportunity to do something with them in that location. So central to the whole project is the hill. So that's an area, like Matt mentioned, that this is an area that we want people to think about when they think about the south portion of the city of Oconomowoc, is active, recreation, family-oriented, pedestrian and vehicle-friendly. So around these arterial roads, we envision bike paths, walking paths, that connect people to commercial uses, that connect people to the bike path on Oconomowoc Parkway. We envision revitalizing the hill. In the past, it was a, it was a ski hill. There's an opportunity to bring tubing back, perhaps some learning-type levels of skiing. It's, it's, it's a hill that we can bring that back to this area, and we have users that we're talking with already that are really excited about that prospect. Outside of winter activities, we've talked to people who are just envisioning right now. So in order to continue these conversations with them, we want to lay this out for success. So things like ropes and challenges courses, which are available year-round, and people with kids, myself included, eight and 10-year-old, they would love to have something in the area like that. A multi-use recreational-type facility. What that becomes can be anything from training facilities for golf, volleyball, wrestling, we've heard. What that becomes can be anything from training facilities for golf, volleyball, wrestling, we've heard all of these things, indoor rock climbing gyms, other, you know, advanced-type training-type stuff that may not exist and hopefully doesn't, it didn't conflict with other stuff that already exists in the city. Tomorrow, we're going to tour a, a facility called Lux Golf in Franklin at the Rock Sports Complex. The owner of that is interested as well. That's an opportunity to really create something unique to go along with tubing that provides year, year-round appeal. This area at one time held a lot of events. We think there's an opportunity for an event venue here. Partnering with a, a good operator, whether that be a, a catering business, a, a brew pub operator, something along those lines, to create indoor/outdoor-type experiences that can be used year-round, that can host events. Things like amphitheaters, dog parks. In Menominee Falls, there's a place called Bark and Brew. It's, it's been pretty popular. You can go bring your dog, socialize with other dog owners, have a beer, let, let, let everybody play. And facilitating traffic in here opens the door to other things like restaurants and retail. Those are all logical uses of this area that we want to set this up for success. So like with that said, I mean, we're here for any comments or questions that you guys might have because our next steps on a project of this scale would be to move forward with, with requests to change the land use in the, in the comp plan and change zoning, so this, this project could move forward and we can really start to, to get it out to the public and, and just charge ahead. We, we love this one.
So at this time, we have a few minutes if you want to add any, ask any questions before we move on to closed session. Any questions from council? Alderman Rozak.
My understanding is the land use plan is the same as the underlying zoning?
I believe right now they match pretty closely. It's higher-density residential surrounded by the previous recreational uses.
Right, which was a suburban reserve, right? It's a suburban reserve category? What we, what we actually have is, in most of these areas, pockets of intermediate or low-multi-unit residential and then suburban reserve, correct?
The zoning is multi-unit low, and that coincides with an urban reserve.
Are you guys willing to give us what the numbers are for single-family, multi-unit low and apartments right now?
Sure, yeah. The, the total units envisioned for this, supported by the infrastructure that went in a long time ago, is six hundred and forty units. That's the number that keeps getting discussed. And that's a number that we're very comfortable with. And our vision of the project includes a mixture of multifamily for rent product as well as a variety of different styles of four-ownership-type product. So that includes about three hundred units of for-rent multifamily of high quality. The stuff that gets built today is, is very nice, higher-rent product. Transitioning into probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty attached product, duplex ranch-type stuff, the townhomes that I mentioned previously, and then two hundred, two hundred to two hundred and fifty, single-family lots of various sizes, so.
Alderman Kavieski.
I appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate the time that you've taken to, to review with, with other members of council and the community and, and other developers. I've probably got over two hundred hours into this particular area of the city since joining council. It, it is a very important area of the community. Yeah, you mentioned six hundred and forty recs approximately are available for this area. The way that you've requested the zoning right now, you've, you've excluded the forty-three-point-nine-six acres out of the rec count. Is that, is that correct? So between areas two, five, six, and eight, and then that northern area, is that gonna take all six hundred and forty recs?
The rec count of six forty included the entirety of the property that's highlighted. So that's a, a portion of that conversation needs to be had yet with, with utilities department. But that conversation includes, when uses evolve for the hill, those numbers are gonna have to get calculated into the total. Six hundred and forty is the number that can go down to McKenzie Lane to the south. There is further capacity to the north, Snyder Lane is what we're being told. And there's some capacity that could go there that really could drive the unit count above six forty, or rec count above six forty.
I just, as, I, I am, I am all-in, and I've expressed this to you and others on council over the years, of, of making this a family-friendly, event-driven destination. That, I think is a vision that the community would support. The number of people in the community that are aware of what used to occur there with skiing and, and all the family times associated with that, all the way back to the history of that area when the Packers used to practice on that, on that western side. It is a special area in our, in our community. And as these discussions play out, I think it's really important that the community know that we're gonna look at it that way. That, you know, you guys are great residential developers. You have done a lot in this community, and that speaks for itself. This is more than just your standard subdivision. And, and that was communicated to Wongard on the, on the frontage side of it. It, it can't be just another cookie-cutter element to the community. It is, it will help to define the Olympia area as its own unique, special place as well as Pabst Farms and our historic downtown. And all, how that connects the community in that corridor of Summit Avenue, which is a unique opportunity, is a unique opportunity that Delafield didn't have, right? Delafield has their historic looking downtown, and then you have to go to eighty-three to get to the retail experience. So I know we're going in a closed session. I just, I, I think it's really important to set that stage and, and for public comment to be made that what you're looking at right now doesn't have the details associated with a lot of that. That'll come, but first step is to, to see what the infrastructure is required in order to support that, and then what, what can get filled in. And that, I think, is that correct in saying that's what you're really looking for tonight?
I think that's correct, thanks, Alderman Kavieski. That, that's an important point. What you're seeing here is a, what we feel is an appropriate inclusion and lack of detail. It, it shows the areas that we think should, and the appropriate uses for them, but it also pri, it primarily focuses on the infrastructure needs to make this site a successful site. In order to have further conversations as this becomes more and more public with the users that are gonna make the hill special, we need to know that the layout and design of the neighborhood and the development as a whole can support those users. So that, the focus is on that infrastructure, and I know that's gonna be a topic of conversation because we are asking that the city be a partner with us in that, in improving this area.
Thank you. Any further comments? Alderman Shellpepper.
Can you explain why you believe the city should be a partner in that? I mean, why, why do you think the city should contribute funds to your project? I mean, what role do you think that we play in it, and, and why is that?
Thank you, Alderman Shellpepper. Several reasons. That this area, if you've been out there, area, I think we can all agree, is blighted. It's fallen into great disrepair, and, and projects of this size that go through this level of disrepair need help. And often that help is, is, needs to come from a public entity. Private parties, when burdened with the amount of costs associated with redeveloping something of this size, generally walk away. So by doing it together, it can happen sooner, and it can, it can happen, period. The infrastructure that you see here is arterial. So this helps facilitate traffic in a manner that makes sense and in a, in a way that it highlights the hill for a future use. This is not how we would design a site. If we, as a private entity, develop property, we have to be able to monetize it. It has to have frontage that, which could be sold. These streets likely go into neighborhoods or through apartment complexes, and they don't bring people efficiently and effectively to the uses that we think can happen here. And then, third, I guess I'll say that great things happen when people work together. This property has a lot of potential, and to fulfill that potential, we need to set it up for success. So the, the infrastructure that you see is a way to do that, to get people in here and, and highlight this area of the city so that it can be special when, when somebody comes and, and helps us with that vision.
Alderman Kavieski.
Last, just on public record, the TIF is, has got to pass a but-for test. And, and that but-for test provides for funding associated with the public good. Not for the developer's good, but for the public good. So I just, all of the things that you said, the partnership associated with creating wealth for the developer and, and any project that's worthwhile is gonna create wealth, and that's great. That creates increment. But it's not our, it's not my position, I think it's not other people's position on the council, that, that TIF is, is used to create the wealth for the developer, is used to create the, the public benefit associated with the project, the public benefit for that.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our closed session. I'm gonna read it first and then ask for a motion to go into closed session. Our closed, our closed session, per Wisconsin state statutes, there are two components. The first one is deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting or specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Public-private partnership for Olympia Hills redevelopment project. Our second item per the same state's statutes nineteen-point-eight-five-one-G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral and written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it or is likely to become involved, sanitary district lawsuits update. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go in closed session.
So moved, Alderman Koth.
Second, Kavieski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna go into closed session behind and then come back and reconvene after a closed session is completed.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to our closed session. I'm going to read it first and then ask for a motion to go into closed session. Our closed session, per Wisconsin state statutes, there are two components. The first one is deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting or specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required closed session. Public-private partnership for Olympia Hills redevelopment project. Our second item per the same state's statutes, 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral and written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it or is likely to become involved, sanitary district lawsuits update. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go in closed session.
So moved, Alderman Koweth.
Second, Kowieski.
All in favor? We're going to go into closed session behind and then come back and reconvene after a closed session is completed.
I am ready.
I'd like to call the order, the City of O'Connox Protection and Welfare Committee meeting. Madam Clerk, has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it has.
Could you please take the roll?
Sure. Alderman Shellpepper?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Douglas?
Here.
Okay, our first order of business is to consider recommend Resolution 22-R3049 granting a 2022-23 Class A intoxicating liquor/fermented malt beverage license to Sendix Olympia LLC at 1450 Olympia Field Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to report on it quick, or do you not need one?
We'll take a quick report. I would appreciate, and we'll move it to council, but...
All right, thank you. So the Sendix has come forward and applied for a Class A retail liquor license, and that is for sales basically that are away from the premises. The city has no quotas on Class A licenses. The applicant meets all statutory and city codes, and also they are looking at opening on October 18th, and I recommend approval.
Sounds good. Any questions? Being none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item, I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Okay.
Do a quick...
So the next item is for granting of a 2022-2023 Class B fermented malt beverage beer license and a Class C wine license for the Corporate Center Drive Hotel Associates LLC. That would be the licensee for the Town Place Suites by Marriott, and that's at 1242 Corporate Center Drive. Again, the city has no quotas on our Class B beer and C wine licenses. The applicants meet all Chapter 12 city codes and state statutes, and they are planning an opening on October 27th, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Any members of the committee have questions? If not, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Could you please take roll call? No, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Being none, the motion passes. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and switch computer platform, and we'll be ready to start the council meeting in just a moment. If you're in the audience and you wish to make a comment during the comments and suggestion from citizens section, there are blue cards in the back of city, in back of the hall. Please fill them out, and you're welcome to come up at that period of time. The comments section is limited to three minutes. It's not a two-way discussion. It's actually a comments that you wish to share with the common council at that time. Okay, with everybody here almost, I'd like to call the order, the City of O'Connox Common Council meeting for Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If we'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, and thank you for your patience in our delay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Alderman Kavieski?
Here.
Alderman Douglas?
Here.
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
Alderman Altman Cloth?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for September 20th, 2022.
Rosick, so moved.
Kavieski, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To move on to comments and suggestion from citizens, I have one blue card. When you call your name, please come up to the podium. Please state your name, your address, and what city you reside. Jill Bilargian, please.
Thank you. My name is Jill Bilargian. I live at 675 South Worthington Street, right here in O'Connox, Wisconsin. Once again, I'm here before this common council to discuss my concerns surrounding these proprietary chemical formulas of phosphate blends and fluoride being injected directly into our drinking water. And once again, I'm requesting that this council help me to open up this discussion into how these treatment products may be affecting the health of the 16,000 people living in this community since Mr. Fry advocated for these treatment products to be injected directly into our drinking water in 1995. I shared many medical journal articles with all of you, proving that doctors have discovered that too much phosphate can be toxic, that in excess of the mineral can cause diarrhea as well as hardening of organs, soft tissues. High levels, excuse me, high levels of phosphorus can affect your body's ability to effectively use other minerals such as iron, calcium, magnesium, magnesium, and zinc. That phosphate can combine with calcium and cause mineral deposits to form in your muscles along with accumulating calcium deposits in your cardiovascular system that can cause irreparable damage. These can also cause blood clotting issues and have been found to be one of the root causes of chronic kidney disease, along with being found at the heart of many kinds of cancers. Due to these serious health issues, I'm questioning if Mr. Fry has made any effort to monitor these health issues in the people in this community since he was the one who fought for these phosphate blends to be injected directly into our drinking water. Do people in this community even realize their water is being dosed with these phosphate blends? The very thing that could be at the root of their health issues? I didn't know this, and I'm a plumber. I just blindly trusted that our water was being dosed with minimal amounts of necessary chemicals in order to keep our water safe for us. Never in a million years would I have guessed that no one in this water industry was ever allowed to know allowed to know all of the ingredients contained within this careous chemical company's now 338 proprietary chemical formulas of drinking water and wastewater treatment products that they have available to sell to our utilities. Beyond these health issues known to be caused by excessive or consistent dosing of this one ingredient in these proprietary chemical formulas of phosphate blends, along with discovering that no one in this water industry was ever allowed to know the other ingredients, I have been begging the authorities in this city to take the initiative and take samples of these treatment products from the containers feeding our drinking water system and have them tested...
If you could wrap it up, please. We're at our three-minute timeframe.
I would like to see this committee, this committee want to test these proprietary chemical formulas so we can all know exactly what we are being dosed with.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the audience? If not, moving on to committee reports, Protection and Welfare. First up is Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3049 granting a 2022 and 2023 Class A intoxicated, intoxicating liquor fermented malt beverage license to Sendix Olympia at Sendix Food Market.
I'm sorry, Mayor. The Sendix has come forward and asked for a Class A retail liquor license. The city has no quotas on those licenses. They do comply with all city ordinances and state statutes, and they are set to open October 18th. I believe that's a soft opening and then the full opening on the 19th. Included also in your packet is a floor plan of where they plan to display the product. So that should, you know, hopefully answer any questions you might have, and I do recommend approval.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Kavieski.
Rosick, second.
Any further discussions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Next up is Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3062 granting a new 2022-23 Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine license to the Corporate Center Drive Hotel Associates LLC, the Town Place Suites by Marriott.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new hotel here in the city, and they have applied for Class B, which is a fermented malt liquor, liquor license, which is beer, and a Class C wine license. The applicant does meet all statutory requirements as well as city codes. Again, there is a floor plan included in your packet that shows where they're going to display and sell their alcoholic beverages, and also, the city has no quotas on these two licenses, and I do recommend approval.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Altman-Cloth.
Second.
Ellis. Any further discussion or comment? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder? Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
On the new business, Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3050 authorizing application by Bar Stars Bartending Service to serve as concierge for the City of Oconomawak Community Center in approving the Community Center Bar concession agreement. Mr. Hepner.
Good evening. Thank you. If you recall, back on September 6th, the Committee of the Whole provided consensus to move forward with Bar Stars bartending service. So thanks to Stan Riffel and Paige Brunzlick, they put together the agreement, and the resolution is before you, and we plan to move forward with Bar Stars, and there's 15 weddings already interested in using their services. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Rosick.
Just briefly, Craig, I think this was a nice job of presenting it to the Park and Rec Committee, getting some good feedback, presenting it to the Committee of the Whole so we had a chance, because, you know, we can be kind of stickler sometimes to, you know, hey, have some questions and work it through so we don't have to do it on the floor and then bring it back for, it just seemed like a really smooth process. So I, kudos to you and your staff on that.
Thank you. Like to entertain a motion, please.
Rosick, so moved.
Second.
Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
On the Consider Act on Termination and Release of Agreement for Plan Development and Restrictions upon Land, Mr. Duffy.
The termination and releasing agreement on lands that are encumbered, that used to be the Ski Hill Golf Course Complex, was brought to our attention from a title company, that these lands were affected by an agreement, and in order for anything to happen with those lands, that we would need to have this released. This is an agreement that was established in 1969, and many of the things that were proposed within the development were not even built. So we asked Attorney Riffel to draft a termination agreement in accordance with the agreement that's in place.
Yeah, the actual language of the agreement terminates after 20 years or whatever. It's passed about 10 years ago.
So it's cleaning, cleanup work. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Any comments or questions? Like to entertain a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Kavieski.
Any further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Next item, Consider Act on the Pre-Development Reimbursement Agreement between the City of Oconomawak and Newman Developments Incorporated. I'd like to entertain a motion. To table?
I'll move to table till the next meeting in October.
Second. Kavieski.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Next item, Consider Act on Ordinance 22-01040 to amend section, multiple sections, discharging and carrying weapons and create section 9.028 Volunteer Urban Deer Management Program of the City of Oconomawak Municipal Code. Counsel, I want to point out that this is a first reading. If you feel very comfortable, there may be an advantage to waive this, waive the first reading for the upcoming deer hunting season. To date, I don't believe we've had any comments from the community on public deer hunting, hunting on public lands. I have not heard any, but it has been published and it has been in the newspaper. Alderman, Altman-Cloth?
There was one Facebook post that I think the Oconomawak Enterprise did, that the few comments that were on it were very positive.
Were positive. Okay, good to hear. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Schreng was here the last time to talk about this ordinance. I want to thank Alderman Shellpepper, Alderman Kavieski for bringing this forward and pushing this. I think this is going to be a great addition to our community. I think it's going to help, hopefully, prevent more car, the car deer accidents that we have and thin the herd out here in Oconomawak. And working with Attorney Riffel, I think we have some very good language in here that protects the citizens of Oconomawak and keeps everybody safe at the same time here. Basically, we've gone through and did a couple changes within the ordinance after listening to the comments that were from the council the last time. There is one correction. I've put Zone 1 in front of everybody. That has expanded a little bit. We reviewed all those areas, and we have no issues with opening those other areas for Zone 1. The ordinance actually was then changed for Zone 1, that description in there. What we're really looking for here is the two highlighted areas that were in the ordinance for the council to make a decision on shotguns and muzzleloaders and being discharged and how far from a habitable building. We, the police department, are recommending 100 yards, but we're open for discussion on that. And then also for bow, we are recommending 50 yards. Part of us putting this together in those distances was looking at lots in the city and the size of lots. Most lots, you know, in the general inside the city, if you can't shoot a bow within 50 yards, protects, you know, the inner-city type of homes and yards and stuff like that. So this really kind of opens it up for the bigger, the bigger lots and where they are in consideration to the zones. We didn't want the ability of somebody to just be able to open their patio door and shoot an arrow out the back of a patio door. So, so that's why we put this language in here, and we're open for discussion.
Like to open up, but do you want to take the lead? Alderman Kavieski?
I do, want to thank Chief and Lieutenant Schreng for the time. Alderman Shellpepper spent time in reviewing this as well. There were several comments made by members of council that I just want to make sure are talked about. There was some concern about position of potential hunters shooting across roads and our trails, and we are mirroring the regulation or this ordinance with DNR regulation that currently exists in regards to that, and there is a 50-foot off-center restriction from where those hunters can, can set up, and it's not legal to shoot a projectile, whether it be a bow or a firearm, across a public road. So...
That is correct.
So that is, that is within this ordinance as it refers back to the DNR rules and regulations that the hunter needs to follow. There is also some discussion about how we, we gauge the involvement from the community in surrounding area. While it's not in the ordinance, there will be on the website that refers to this ordinance, the ability for anybody who wants to participate in this to, to give a call.
Correct. We'll put it on the website. We'll put the zones out there, and we'll put in there that, you know, if they would like it, you know, we recommend calling us, letting us know, hey, you're going to be out there, this and that, so.
Yep.
So we have an idea.
The ordinance doesn't create any special permitting, nor additional, hopefully, time spent by, by our police department because it does refer back to the DNR, because it is voluntary, and it doesn't prohibit activity associated with that.
Correct. They still have to have a license from the DNR.
Yep. And we did talk about putting up some signage on those...
Yes, and we talked about, we'll look at signage, we'll review signage, possibly putting some signage up in specific areas so people are aware.
I've...
Question, Alderman Kavieski and Alderman Shellpepper. What are your thoughts on the recommended distances that the chief has presented?
For the 50 yards associated with the bow and 100 yards for muzzleloader, I'm, I'm comfortable with the 50 yards. Open for discussion on that. I, I understand the public safety issue associated with that, and if it was 100 yards for muzzleloader and bow, I think there'd probably be more discussion, but 50, I think, is reasonable.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Yeah, that's tough, because I think when we went into this last week, or was it last session, we were talking about following the DNR regulations, which didn't really limit the arrow and crossbow, but I, I kind of respect if that's what the police department is recommending for, for safety reasons.
Yeah, we looked at the DNR, we looked at and talked about it, but I think we started running into some situations that loopholes that could be there, where things could happen within the city and we would have no recourse as law enforcement at that. So I think the 50 yards is a good number for us to still be able to enforce what we need to in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Spiegelberg?
I was going to say, I'm in agreement with the 100 yards for the discharge area for the shotguns or muzzleloaders, 50 for the bows, and maybe we see how this goes for the first year. I mean, is this something that we could potentially bring back and, and lower those discharge areas at some point in the future? But this would be conservative and a good way to start, I think.
Alderman Rosick?
Yeah, hey, I want to, two, two quick comments. One, we, we started a process several months ago where Alderman can, can work on putting an agenda item on, and this is, I think, probably one of the first times we've used that, where you guys have requested that it get done, and we went through the process. I think the process has worked out great. Staff was assigned as appropriate. This wasn't the end-of-the-world kind of thing, but it, you know, took some time for us to get through. You guys and the chief have done a great job, so kudos to, to staff and everyone on this one. Yeah, I'd be okay with 150. I think 25 would actually probably be better for bow, just because, you know, 50-yard shot, you're not taking that anyway, but I respect your, your opinion on that. Well, out of curiosity, if someone were, let's say I opened up my back patio and I don't have a 50-yard space between me and other habitable buildings, and my neighbor were to call and say, "Rosick's shooting his bow and arrow into his garage," or, you know, into the tree line behind us, is this a disorderly conduct ticket potentially, or just a...
No, there's, there's the, it would be under the same ordinance, somewhere the 9.02, discharging of a weapon within the city.
Okay. Okay. Ooh, okay.
Alderman Douglas?
I just want to clarify, so, parent A, you're basically saying shotgun muzzleloaders, 100 yards unless the owner of adjacent property gives written permission?
That's correct.
But under the crossbow, it's 50 no matter what, even if you have the permission from...
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. It caused an issue, yeah, it caused an issue.
At my house, I can get my two neighbors to say, "Okay."
You're in the middle, you get permission from the neighbor on one side, so now, okay, I got that distance, I can shoot bow and arrow, but the neighbor on this side doesn't, it, so we were just better off removing that portion of it.
But I think, I like the comment that maybe let's come back and revisit this maybe next summer to try to see how it, how it goes. I know it's a little tough to track, but if anybody knows who is, are some of those hunters, maybe we could bring them in and say, "Hey, how did it go?" That might be a nice follow-up to say, "Was this the right approach?"
Just make, hey, deer, bow season's already started on September 17th, so I might be in Zone 1 or Zone 2 like tomorrow, so...
It, it depends if you waive the second reading.
Yeah, right. Good point. Very good point.
If council is comfortable, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Kavieski.
Second. Shellpepper.
And I'm making, I'm making that assumption that it's 50 and 100 yards as described?
Yes.
As presented.
And do you want to waive the second reading?
And waive the second reading.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alderman Altman-Cloth? You're cringing over there.
I am cringing. The deer population in this area is so terrible that something needs to be done, and I'm 100% in support of hunting, and I, and I like that idea. I just, where I get tripped up, and, you know, poor Lou had a deal with me on the phone today on this, I've just seen so many irresponsible hunters since Neshota opened up their hunting. And, you know, on one hand, I think that, okay, well, you know, the Lake Country Trail is closed this year. This could be really good, like, this would be kind of a good first year because technically you should not be on the trail, even though I know today I saw people on the trail. But then on the flip side of it, it's like, well, then maybe the hunters are going to get used to no traffic on the trail, and then next year, they're not going to be as safe.
Can I, yeah, can I comment on that?
No.
No.
No, you can. I'm just kidding.
I mean, my, my comment, it, because I...
Could I be like a maybe vote today? I mean, does that work?
No, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know.
Alderman Rosick, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. The Neshota hunt is interesting. They, when they started that a few years ago, it, it's an interesting hunt because they allow the hunt to move forward because the deer population's high, but they allow also during that special hunt, which is only, I think, four or five days...
Only 10 days.
Yeah. They also allow people to continue hiking through the area with their dogs and everything else. So that's really weird. I, I mean, these areas, like in Zone 1 and Zone 2, there aren't really trails going into them, per se, and I, other than a deer hunter, I don't imagine there's going to be a lot of people hiking around back there when it's, you know, 20 degrees, you know, walking around camo. Well, I...
You should see that trail in the middle of the winter. I mean, it's completely beat down.
It's just, but Neshota is so highly traveled, it's, it is different. I'm so, that's my, that's my comment to you.
No, and I don't disagree with that. I guess...
I don't want to hunt at Neshota because I'm nervous if I'm sitting out there that there's going to be, first of all, the deer aren't going to come around if there's 15 people walking around with their dogs, so it's just an unusual, they should close it down for five days, so...
I don't disagree with that.
And Spiegelberg?
Do you have any information about injuries or fatalities in other communities that are doing this as well?
I, the only one I, honestly, that I talked to was Delafield, who really hasn't had any problems whatsoever, but talking to the DNR, you know, talking to them about it, they go, really, they haven't had many issues in, in the communities that have done this. And like they said, it kind of polices itself, and that's the way the DNR does it, because if you go out there and the sun comes up and there's 50 people out there, it's not going to hold 50 people, you know, and, and people are not going to come out there and, you know, you'll get to the correct number for the size of the land. And like the DNR said, are there irresponsible people in this world? Yes. Okay? But I, I will defer that most of the hunters are responsible hunters and follow the DNR regulations. And like the DNR said, are there irresponsible people in this world? Yes. Okay. But I will defer that most of the hunters are responsible hunters and follow DNR regulations.
Okay, and I'm not a hunter. I mean, I know some of this, but... So if they're shooting with guns, are they... They still have to wear the blaze orange?
Mm-hmm.
Is that true? What about bow? Is that camo?
Yes.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, bow is... You can wear a full camo.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's on the season.
Now, now...
If it's during gun deer, you have to wear orange.
Neshota, you have to wear orange for a bow.
For bows?
No, for the special hunt in Neshota Park.
For the special hunt, right.
Which is bow hunting, you do have to wear blaze orange.
Right.
So...
Can I just comment on that? Yeah. I understand what you're saying. We're really trying to follow what the DNR is recommending on this. I mean, they're the specialists in this. I really... We had some lengthy discussions with the DNR on it, and, I mean, they're comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with it. I can understand some hesitation on that. You know, and like I said, I'm more than willing to come back here next year and review it, and if it's not working, we reduce it, or we can expand some other lands or adapt it how we need to, you know, going, hey, yeah, we need blaze orange, you know, or something of that nature.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Okay, I promised last comment. I am going to go ahead and trust you and trust the DNR on this, and, you know, trust the hard work from those two guys, just with the understanding that next year we can switch things up, whether it's space off of, you know, a buffer zone off of the trail or blaze orange, or you... Yeah.
Chief, one comment, if you feel it's valuable to put any type of temporary posting of signage on the closed Lake Country Trail with regard to that there's currently bow hunting available?
That's what we were talking about, is putting some type of signage up there to let people know that this is occurring. Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Alderman Ellis?
Can we be assured that this will come back in front of us next year?
Yes.
Does that have to be part of the recommendation?
I have to put it in the minutes.
It's in the minutes, and Mark's writing this down, and we have a big chart that we put all the different things in, so we're trying really hard not to forget anything and to track everything. I think Alderman Shellpepper had a comment first?
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we're all clear that we're only talking about bow hunting within the city-designated zone. I think the water got a little muddied when we started talking about blaze orange and gun hunting. Gun hunting's not allowed within...
Well, I think the thought process is that if you decide to change it next year, you could require that bow hunters be in orange. I think that's where Jennifer was going.
Okay. Well, I didn't pick that up.
You can't do it?
No, I mean, you're preempted by state law.
Well, there we have an answer.
There we go.
Alderman Douglas?
I just want to clarify. So Zone 1, are we allowing shotguns and muzzleloaders in this?
No.
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 This is just...
Can't duck hunt and everything else there?
No.
If you owned it, though, if I could... If that was private property with that much acreage and you wanted to shoot 100 yards away from a occupied dwelling, you could. Private property only.
Or have permission, written permission. Yes.
That's in your... There are some properties within the city that is farmland, and those people would be allowed to use their shotgun on their private property or a muzzleloader in there. There are still those properties that exist within the city, so...
And that currently exists today. It's not a change to the ordinance or an add to the ordinance.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. The second reading has been waived, just so council remembers. I'd like to call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Bang.
I'm sorry, did you say A?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, okay. I just...
Oh, jeez.
I wasn't sure what you said. Sorry. Alderman Shellpepper?
Bang.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.